The four o'clock time.
Just please let us know that you're okay or if you're not okay, let us know, I guess, with the recording.
So one of the reasons I have Nurse B here with us this afternoon is in some of your questions that you sent ahead of time, you had some specific questions about contact tracing and COVID, and we know that a lot of information is coming out and changing rapidly. So I felt our Nurse B has been going to a tremendous amount of webinars and overviews, and she would be a great person to answer some of your questions. So we're gonna, we're gonna start with those first before we start with our presentation.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna read the questions I have, and then I will give you my answers. The first question is, now that we are closer to the starting date, I would like to repeat my earlier question. Will rapid result COVID-19 testing be available for both students and staff in order that tracing can be quickly implemented and infected individuals be put in isolation? We are relying on the state for testing, and this type of testing is unknown to us at this point. This is a state decision. That was the initial answer to that. But after a Zoom meeting yesterday, the governor reported that there'll be some sites around the state, and our site will be at CCRI here in Newport. So when a student presents with two symptoms from some minor symptom list, or one symptom from more severe with coughing, loss of taste, loss of smell, just one of those symptoms, I will call a parent or guardian to come get the student, and you will be able to call a hotline that will allow you to get an appointment at the CCRI testing site. When you go for that appointment, they're gonna do two tests there. They're gonna do the PCR, which is the longer test that takes about two days to process, and they're gonna do a rapid test. If the rapid test is negative, that doesn't mean the child can come back to school, or the staff person can come back to school. That means that they have to wait for the PCR test or the longer version test. If that test is positive, then they'll have to wait out the isolation period. Now, if your child is a close contact and needs to have a test, you know, close contact of a student who tests positive, if they need to have a test, they will also use the testing sites that are designated just for school, staff, and K through 12 students. If they're asymptomatic, they will not receive a rapid test because it's not sensitive enough to pick up an infection that early. So they'll only get the PCR test, and they'll have to isolate until that test comes back. Questions on this page for me also?
No, you answered them. So those were the, the big questions that were given, that you sent to us ahead of time about COVID questions. So I wanted to make sure, since Nurse B has been going to quite a few seminars on, on this, that she was here with us tonight. So based on your question, your, your questions, we developed a presentation to try to answer as many of your questions. However, we know that there, I'm sure there's more questions popping up since these questions were populated. And so we will be looking at the chat and, and trying to answer your questions. If you want to ask questions that kind of connect to what we're presenting, that would be, that would be really helpful. However, we'll, you know, as soon as we see questions, we'll, we'll pause so that we can try to answer them in time and, and stick to the, the timeframe because we know we, we have a five o'clock town hall with the next school. So we'll get started. So we have our presentation in. So we have our presentation in Spanish as well, and we will post both of these on the district website as well as into the chat. And I'm sure I see Marson on this chat, so I'm, I'm sure they're already posted. So, all right. So thank you for coming. For those of you who just popped in, I'm Dr. Bean. I'm the Assistant Superintendent, as well as the principal at Pel School, at Thompson School this year, along with the, our Assistant Principal, Mr. Vokorov, and our school nurse, Nurse B. So thank you again for, for coming this afternoon. So the three key areas that we found from your questions, as well as the three key areas that we're working on every single day, is what is the school day going to look like? What kind of technology are we going to be able to offer in order to pull together both distance learning for the families that have selected that, along with our families that want full in-person? And then also, you know, the most critical part is the safety of your child and our staff as we start to enter back into the school building. So the first thing we wanted to share is about the design of the student's schedule. So as we started to design the schedule, we went through many different iterations of schedules for a middle school five through eight program. We wanted to take into account that we wanted our students to have a great comprehensive program when they're in-person, as well as if they are in distance learning, whether they're, that's because they selected distance learning for the first 60 days, or the first semester, or they are going to be part of an A to M, N to Z, depending on what grade level they're in. So the schedule we designed took all that into consideration, and every child, each quarter, will have an elective. So each of our elective teachers are assigned to a cluster for a quarter. So for example, if you're in fifth grade, you might start first quarter out with music. So that means you're gonna have music for first quarter by the same music teacher, and that music teacher would be in a safe pod or a safe cluster for the quarter. And the other music teacher would be in the other cluster. So they would be collaborating together and developing their lessons together, and everyone in fifth grade would have music for the quarter. And then the next quarter, they would get art. The next quarter, they would get technology, STEM, and digital literacy. And then the next quarter, they would get health, and a combination of physical activity as well. Also, in the course of the day, they'll have three of their four academics. So each day, they'll see three of their four academic teachers, and they'll also have lunch. And for those of you who were at Thompson last year, a boost period, which includes enrichment or intervention. And this is also the time that those students who selected foreign language in grades six, seven, or eight would be receiving foreign language, but they're going to receive it remotely. So that way, we're able to provide that program in a very modified manner, but also in a safe manner. So our foreign language program will be completely remote, whether you're in the building or on distance learning. So it looks like we have one.
They just can't hear you.
They can't hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, it's sort of, there's an audio issue with the computer.
Okay. Okay. All right, great. So Mr. B is gonna talk a little bit about how important it's going to be for our parents this year to interact with our Aspen portal in order to get their child's schedule.
Hi, everyone. So through Aspen this year, it's gonna be different for Thompson families. Not only are parents gonna have access to the portal, which they have in the past, but maybe it wasn't the primary use, as it will be this year, but additionally, students are gonna have access to the portal this year. And what's that is gonna allow us to do is that before school starts, we're gonna be able to send students and parents an email that will give them instructions on how to see their schedule. Now, later on, this parent portal will also be really helpful for checking on grades and assignments and looking at report cards. But what's really important in this first week or two before school is that students come to the building knowing their schedule and knowing who their homeroom teacher is. This is because when we start the school and we're going to arrival, we don't want kids congregating outside. We don't want kids congregating in the building. So we're trying to make a process that if we have their staple pod as soon as possible. So on this, as you can read here, as I'm talking, these are just the ways that, the way the system's gonna work. Students are gonna get an email telling them how to log into, how to create their Aspen's portal. They're then gonna get a second email that gives them the instructions on how to access their schedule. We're gonna put all this information out in our Thompson Community Group and post it on our website as well. I think it's important to run through now. If you're a new parent to the school, we have to get you set up with an Aspen account. So the primary account, primary contact in Aspen is gonna be sent an email with instructions on how to set up their Aspen portal. They'll then be sent a second email on how to access the schedule. If you're a returning parent, we actually created portals for you last year when we went to distance learning. But, you know, in the mess of what that was, we know only about 20% of families ever accessed that parent portal. So if you don't remember what it is, you can email this parentportal@psri.net email address, and they will be able to reset your password and get you set up so that you can access it.
So we're gonna pause for a minute and look at the questions that are on the, the chat. So I think a parent had a question about electives. So yes, each grade will have the same elective for the quarter. So every child, by the end of the year, will have music, art, some kind of technology, and health. If you're a part of that health quarter, there will be remote PE activities in, in a challenge form that will then be discussed and graphed during the health class. So there'll be PE activities on Monday for that, for all the grades. And then during the quarter you're assigned to health, you'll be having your health classes. So this is the way that we designed it so that we could keep our co-curricular staff assigned safely to a safe cluster per quarter. So again, for example, if you're in fifth grade and you kick off the year with art, one cluster will have Mrs. Sheen the whole quarter for art. And the other cluster will have Mrs. Ipar the whole quarter for art. And then the next quarter, they'll have another co-curriculars. Another question? That was it? Out of seven? Okay. Okay. Questions that came up, that helped us design our presentation was around arrival. So for arrival, we have asked the, the bus company, and we will be sharing information with all the parents, that we have staged the, the Thompson campus, if you will, a bit differently. So each grade is specific to a door. So our fifth graders will stay where they always have been, in the back, in the, in the courtyard. And then the seventh grade will be on the upper courtyard, and they will use the central street door. The bus company is going to drop off fifth and seventh graders in the back. So if their bus typically arrived in the front, if you're a fifth and seventh grader, the bus company will be bringing fifth and seventh graders to the back. And we're asking families to, if you're dropping off your fifth or seventh grader, we're asking you to drop them off in the back. We don't want any children crossing from the front of the building to the back of the building. So you probably can guess that in the front of the building, we're going to have sixth grade and eighth grade. The one half of the front of the yard will be sectioned off for our sixth graders, and they will come in the front door. And our eighth graders will be on the section of the lawn closest to City Hall, and they're gonna come in through the side door. So how we're envisioning this is that parents are dropping students off in the right locations based on the front or the back. The bus company will be dropping off students in the right locations based on the front or the back. And walkers will start to get trained that if they're a sixth grader, they're crossing with our crossing guard in the front. If you are a fifth grader or a seventh grader and you're walking, you're walking up man, or walking down man, or walking down bull, however you're walking to school, and you're coming to the back. So it's gonna take a little bit of time, but we will be having people, what we're calling welcome posts, people to help direct students to the right locations and getting them used to this new design. We had a great group of students here about three weeks ago for the different orientations, and that is a process that we did with the tour, and we showed the students. So we have some ambassadors from every grade who saw what arrival will look like for fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth, and how their doors will be different, and how when they come into the building, it'll look very different. They will not stay outside until their full homeroom is intact. They will be brought in, and they'll go to their homeroom teacher. And that's our plan, whether it's a beautiful day out, or it's a snowstorm. We're gonna get them into the building as they arrive, as walkers, drop-offs, or bus. And we will have people at different stations so that we're adhering to the six feet apart, so that they can get into the building safely, and get their breakfast, and get to their homeroom.
So this kind of just encapsulates everything that Dr. Bean was talking about. But what we added to this slide was these tentative times. We are looking at having a staggered arrival so that all kids are not arriving at the same time by their transportation type. So these times that we put up there are our best guess estimate right now. We do not have exact times because the bus company is still developing its routes. They have a lot to work with in terms of ridership and bus cleaning between schools. So we're hoping that it's those parent drop-offs who come the earliest, and they would drop at 7:45 a.m. Then 10 minutes later, our walkers will have timed their route to start to get here at around 7:55, and our bus kids will be coming at around 8:00 or 8:05. That would work well for us with everything that's going on, and we're hoping that we could stick to something that's very close to this as a schedule. So really just using this slide right now to compare families, that we were, we are gonna be asking for staggered arrival. There was a question in the chat about the bus company. It was, when will we receive the bus information? Again, that information is coming out, I would hope, next week, but I can't say for sure, and we'll just have to get back to you. If you want to email one of us, I might have more information, but I don't have anything right now. Alex Dijarnett asked, will there be a crossing guard at the Mann Street crosswalk on Broadway? That's the same question.
No, I think they're on 711 towards the church, at the base of.
Okay. You'll have to look into that.
Yeah. I know the crossing guard that we have had at Thompson is the crossing guard that is, you know, right near the, the church and crosses across Broadway.
Another question is, when should we receive the email with the schedule?
So right now, we are still finalizing the schedule because we are still getting requests from families to move to distance learning. And also, we are still looking at the numbers in terms of balancing the classes. So we're, you know, you'll be receiving more information about how to log in, to look at your schedule, and who your child's homeroom teacher is, and all that great information next week. So as we mentioned, with the way your child is going to arrive, because that's gonna create a specific door for each grade, we've set up four breakfast stations as your child enters that specific door. So if you can visualize your sixth grader walking in, up this, the front stairs, into the building, and then up, up the stairs, heading towards the cafeteria, but they will be picking up their breakfast right as they're starting to enter the sixth grade hallway. There will be a breakfast station there with our food service company to take their, their breakfast number and to give them a grab-and-go breakfast, which then they will have in their, in their homeroom. So each grade has a breakfast station that they'll grab and go their breakfast based on the door that they come in. So if for fifth grade, the same thing, they're gonna come in the door, down in the lower courtyard, and there will be a breakfast station right near the entrance to the fifth grade hallway, and the fifth graders will grab their breakfast and go to their classroom. We've tried a variety of different ways to try to stage lunch in the cafeteria, but based on our most recent visit from the Rhode Island Department of Health and from the National Guard, we appear to have to also stage the gym for lunch as well. So we have plexiglass barriers for the tables, because the students obviously will be taking their masks off to eat. A table that typically could seat 12 students now can only seat four, and that's because we got the plexiglass. Otherwise, each table would have only been able to seat two. So based on that, we will probably have to stage three classrooms in the gym for lunch, and five classrooms in the cafeteria for lunch. But that will allow the students to be able to get out of their room and go have lunch in a different place. And like I said, some will do, some will have it in the, on the cap, and some will have it on the, in the gym.
There was a question about semesters. Also wondering about advanced math for sixth and eighth grades.
And two questions earlier also said seventh grade.
Oh, okay.
About food, advanced math. Okay. So in terms of the curriculum, we are having the algebra class in eighth grade, but we, we are going to be differentiating for math in the other grades. We could not create safe pods and pull off foreign language and different, in the different levels. So we're differentiating for the math in sixth and seventh grade, as well as fifth grade. Other question?
Will the schedule be sent to parents of what day students will be in-person? Will students be reported in-person the week of 14th? Do we have to?
So the question is about, you know, when will we get the information, and what days will my child come in, based on the governor's latest information that she's allowing districts to have a staggered start. So of course, as a district, that was, you know, new information for us, and we're working with the other East Bay districts, and we are, our goal is to have that mapped out by tomorrow so that we can let families know. We, you know, believe me, we realize that, you know, this is another change, and another revision of our schedule and our busing. And so it, it's just not something that, that can get done overnight. So we're, we're working on it, and we will do our best to get that out, hopefully by tomorrow.
Another question in the chat, will schedule be sent to parents of what day students will be in-person? Will students be reported in-person the week of 14th? Do we have any answers?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And then there was roughly how many children will be in each class?
So that depends on whether we're on a AB schedule or we're full in-person. So if we're full in-person, we're, we're going to be in fifth and sixth at, in most cases, 15. And if we're on an AB schedule, your classes will be for seventh and eighth, right now, anywhere from eight to 10 on an AB. And that, that's a pretty general average. We're, we're about 200 students requesting distance learning, but like I said, we had a spike in the number of families that changed their mind about wanting in-person. And then we are still getting not a lot, but a few new registrations, and those families are making those choices as well. So, you know, the data keeps changing every day.
There's a few more questions. Next one is, how will full-time? Next one is, how will full time distance learning be handled? Class videos? I have not seen anything on that.
Do you mind? Alright, it might be better if we keep going down the slide maybe?
Okay.
Because we're going to get to the academics. So one of the, the ways that we're going to get students outside and fresh air is to make sure that we're trying to create opportunities for students to have classes outside. So the safest way we can do this is to schedule specific days that teachers would take their class outside based on E L A. And then on Tuesday, and then one of the clusters would have recess. Right now, we're working with our Newport Community School around tents for outside on the courtyard side for the recess. So that the students, you know, if we still have a lot of sunny days or even rainy days, that they would be able to do some, you know, small activity. You know, it's not, recess isn't going to look like recess. So, you know, it's going to be some kind of fun activity that the teachers will take the students out two days a week for each cluster. And then every day, a student will have the opportunity to have an outdoor classroom based on E L A, math, science, and social studies. So we're just trying to think of the safest way we could get the kids outside with the limited amount of space that there is on this, on this campus. So we're really relying for families to make sure that they're not sending students to school if they have any kind of symptoms. And that you're screening at home with temperature and the other, you know, coughs, sneezing, headache. And no, at least if you're thinking anything else I'm missing in terms of screening.
Really anything out of the norm. If something's different, if they have a temperature, lose, loss of taste, loss of smell, difficulty breathing. Yeah, runny nose, nausea, vomiting. There'll be more information coming forward on that. We are looking at a few different options for a screening tool that can be used every morning. Looking at the possibility of maybe an app for smartphones. Possibly something on Aspen. We're trying to find something that works best for most of our population.
So it's really going to be important that we're consistent about the screening so that, you know, we're making sure that the students and staff that are coming into the building are coming in feeling good and feeling ready to learn. One of the most important things is the students have to wear their mask. They have to wear their mask at all times except when they're having their lunch and having their breakfast. And so we are not allowing bandanas and we're not allowing gaiters. So a student needs to have their mask. Homeroom, we have organized, the office staff has done a great job organizing pencil boxes for every student so that they have their own safe supplies, including a little pencil sharpener so that they're not, you know, touching, you know, another place where, you know, common touching would happen with the pencil sharpener. Also, the P T O has put together over 700 safety bags that include a mask and hand sanitizer, Kleenex. And we just found a vendor that has the little packages of wipes. So every student will have their own safety bag. They'll be assigned bathrooms by floor and regular cleanings. The staff will be using a Google form for the floor. And a student will have to be put on that Google form. So we have a way for contact tracing. Also, it will be a way that the floor will be monitoring students so that they can go, so that they can use the bathroom. We looked into creating specific bathroom schedules. But right now, we're looking at this room first because the bathroom schedules we feel would start at the minute they walk in the door and go until the very end of the day. And it's not natural. And you can only have two students in the bathroom. So it would take a homeroom quite a while to get through all the students. And honestly, they might not need to use it. So we're going to try the Google form. It's going to do multiple things for us. Keep track of who's in the bathroom and also limit, obviously, the number of students in the bathroom. And also give us a data sheet so that if we do have to do any contact tracing for a student that was not part of a safe pod, then, you know, we would have that data very handy. So this was, this is our best thinking right now. The way we have the students set up in the classrooms is that they are six feet apart. That's why we are very limited in the number of students that can be in a classroom. We have fans in the windows for ventilation to vent out the hot air. So there's fans in every, in two windows in every classroom that doesn't, that already, that does not have A C. In terms of when we're staging anything in the building, in between homerooms, we have to keep 14 feet apart. So when we're mapping out the arrival for your child as we're waiting for a couple of students from the same homeroom, the homerooms are 14 feet apart. And that's all being painted out and roped off in the different areas in the front of the school and the back as we get closer to the start date. We have specific cleaning periods after arrival and dismissal and then during the day. The custodial crew has a cleaning protocol for high use areas. And there's a custodian assigned to each floor. We also have our plant manager, Mr. Larry, has changed the schedule for one of his custodians so that they're coming in at an earlier time to help assist with this. We have signs posted in all the hallways and the entrances and the bathrooms about how to safely wear your mask, about washing your hands, sanitizing. These are in English and Spanish. So those are some of the protocols that we've been developing and walking through each day of the five days of professional development that we have with our teachers. We just completed two days. And some of these safety protocols have been reviewed with the staff. And then each day, we're adding a new protocol onto their professional development days.
So I'm going to pick up this slide. This is just about how the classroom is set up, just to give you an idea of what it looks like inside. There's no lockers this year. Kids have to bring their backpacks into the classroom with them and kind of keep them under their desk. So we're, we're asking people to make sure they don't overstuck their backpacks or have a lot of items in it. Excuse me, have it on their chair is the, is the protocol. And if, you know, if it's large, it's going to take up more space. It's also going to be heavy. So if we can limit the amount of items in there, it would be helpful for everyone. We talked about pencil boxes are going to be provided in the room. Every kid will have that personal sharpener. Inside a classroom, we're going to have kids wearing their masks at all times. The desks are going to be six feet apart. They're going to have a personal sanitizer. We're going to have open windows with those fans to allow for the ventilation. We'll have class wipes and class sanitizer as well. So it's covered from all those areas.
I think the superintendent mentioned last night on the district town hall that we have these misters and these cleaning machines where the custodial crew will wear them on their back and they will be doing the sanitizing. And that, and that's a new cleaning system that, that we have in the schools as well.
So this, the next slide is going to speak to what remote learning is, is going to look like. So it's just one slide, but we'll, we'll talk a bit for, and then once we're done with that, I think we just have a few more slides about people and contact information. Then we're going to run back through all these questions in the chat. We're at 4:42, so that should give us enough time to answer the questions and finish this up. So in the remote learning environment, if you're a distance learning, if you chose distance learning for those first 60 days, first semester or full year, your kids are all in one section with kids who are in the same, same, have the same choice. And they're going to follow a normal schedule inside of a cluster. They will have assigned class times just like any other student. And they're going to log into their class. They'll start in a homeroom class just like any other student. And that'll be where they meet for the day in the morning, check in, do attendance, and have a brief moment to chat with each other. From there, they'll move on to each teacher opening up their Google Meet to meet with them in their Google Classroom and allowing the students to access assignments, listen to lessons, have that student to teacher relationship and develop that community. Google Classroom is our primary tool for assignments. So this is how kids are going to see what is, what they need to do for the week. It's going to, it's going to see, give them an opportunity to turn in their assignments and get feedback on their assignments from teachers. Google Meet is going to be, is a mean way for students to connect with each other. Because we know that, you know, a very important part of this is that in this remote learning, we got to build ways for students to connect and still have social relationships and have strong relationships with their teachers as well. So the primary, last one to share is that in that remote learning, you know, students are receiving the direct instruction from their teachers. And they are going to have opportunities for practice and feedback, just like any student who has chosen to come in person and do.
Yeah, so we've been working as a district on an instructional framework so that students are coming in to the class for that direct instruction. And then students will be given opportunity for some independent practice. So at that time, we're trying to minimize the amount of screen time. So when they're doing that independent practice, they can, they would sign out. And then there would be an opportunity for them to come back in within that 50 minute block for feedback and a question period and then a quick end of the class formative assessment. So what we're doing over the several days is we're going to be modeling those types of instructional practices with the teachers. And they're, they're working on a professional development calendar that's going to be providing them with the different tools that they're going to use when they're in Google Meet so that they can make the, the instruction more engaging for the students. So some of the things that we heard from the survey from the parents and from students was that they wanted more time to be able to interact with their, their teacher and also some time to interact with their classmates. So it really is a new approach for, for our teachers as well as our students working with students that are in front of them at the same time that they have students that are virtual. So the, you know, there's a training that's happening to support the teachers around that. We've been doing a book club around instructional practices and instructional tools that you can use to make your lesson more engaging for students and more interactive. So that is what we're trying to accomplish. And it is a lot. It's a lot of work and, you know, and we're, and we're working very, very hard and to support our teachers so that when we come back, whether it's remote or in person, that we're trying to create a comprehensive program for your child, no matter what the, you know, where they are. Whether they're here in the seat or they're in their special desk area in their home.
So I apologize, the last few slides were contact information for the guidance counselors, ourselves, Aspen portal and the school. Those are going to be sent out right afterwards, but my Google Meet crashed on me and I haven't been able to get back in. So I can't put the slides up. So I think we'll spend the last 13 minutes we have here going through the questions in the chat. Okay. So the school start and end time is, we're looking at around 8:00 a.m. You know, students arrive as early as 7:40 and then a dismissal sometime around 1:30 or 1:45.
That hasn't been confirmed and we're still working on that. We, we know that they, right now, they're, they're working on dismissing the high school at 12:30. And so we are trying to see what the bus company can do in terms of getting our, our middle school students out a little bit early so that they're not here for the six and a half hours wearing the mask.
So just to the, will distance learning be class videos? Will it be real time? I think we just answered that, yes, it's going to be real time classes with their teachers. We have, with students now eating breakfast in the classroom, has any consideration been placed in providing all students no cost breakfast similar to a couple of years ago?
Now, that's something that we have, we'll have to talk with, with the wellness committee. And I'm not sure if Colleen Superintendent Jermaine is still on the call, if that has been decided around, around the breakfast. The last thing we want is any student coming into the building and being hungry, especially when other students are in the classroom eating their breakfast, so.
When you say that grade level math classes will be differentiated, do you mean that the teacher will be differentiating instruction based on students' needs? Or will the children be grouped according to ability? So the former, that with, in those classes where the kids are, it's going to be heterogeneous in the classroom. And teachers will be differentiating for those advanced math students inside of that classroom.
Right. Except for eighth grade will have algebra.
Except for eighth grade with algebra. If a class has a positive case and needs to quarantine, do school age siblings of that class also need to quarantine?
Okay, I did reply, bottomed out in the comments. But basically, the siblings of the student that tested positive will need to quarantine. The Department of Health will be overseeing contact tracing and they'll make decisions beyond that. So I'm not sure what the answer to that is.
If we have access to a Chromebook at home, can the school Chromebook remain at school to limit the items coming and going from school? Yes. So on those days when the kid is in school, they can just come and get their Chromebook from their class. And in those days when they are, when they go home, they can use the device they have at their house.
Your child's going to be in the same room all day, so they can keep their computer in their room.
What happens when it gets cold outside? Will the windows stay open?
I don't, I don't know.
We're going to have to be in contact with Department of Health. I think that's something that all schools are going to be facing when they get to that, when we get to that part of the year. And that's going to be, have something that we're going to need guidance on from the Department of Health to understand what's the safest way to proceed. If a DL student needs either extra help or is looking for more work to do, will this be available? If so, what would it be? You know, teachers are going to be helping students inside their classroom as a normal class and working with them and giving them individualized attention as well as group attention. I'm not sure about more work. We like to post resources for, additional resources for families to use if they want to explore.
One of the things that we'll be sending out information is we will be hosting a tutorial program for our families at Thompson. And we're doing that in partnership with some of our Thompson staff along with the community school and a translator. And so one of the things that we want to do is provide an overview of, you know, Google Classroom, Google Meets. And then some of the tools that we're purchasing. Last year, I'm sure you can imagine that tons of companies offered their tools for free, which was very nice, but then, you know, the problem is now they're not free. And, you know, everyone loved the tools. So we've been working with the teachers on, on looking at the, the most engaging tools to make their content more rigorous and more, more engaging. And so we are running tutorials around some of, some of the tools that we purchased at Thompson. So we will be initially doing some pretty basic overviews with parents around the distance learning structure. And then eventually, having other evenings where we can share some of, some of the other tools that your students will be using.
There's a question, how long will the school day be? And I'd just say we, we're looking at that, looking back to that slide earlier, around as early as a 7:45 arrival. And we're looking at dismissal till around at 1:30 or 1:45. And again, yes, to the distance learning students following the in-person schedule just in their own section. That would be the same for distance learning kids as well, the 8 to 1:30 time. And that is correct, yes, they will have a full day of interaction with the teachers as if they were in-person learning. Siblings of, this one was unanswered. There should be siblings of a student. Mr. Jermaine, saying at this time, Pal is the only universal breakfast location. Thank you. Thank you, Morrison, for posting this website, our presentation to the website. Dr. Jermaine, that's right, we'll keep those windows open as long as we can. Jermaine confirming. Where are you going, the bus company? We'll start as quickly and end as we can. Will distance learners be watching the in-person classes or will they have? They're going to have their own section. So the question is, will distance learning students be watching the in-person classes? No, they're going to have their own section. So they're going to be grouped with other kids who chose the distance learning option.
Those, that, that answer is for the families that opted for distance learning all five days. So if you're a seventh and eighth grade family as of right now and you opted for full in-person, you know, we, we had to create an A/B schedule because our numbers were growing on the number of students that wanted in-person. And we're still looking at those numbers in five and six. So for those students who are on that A/B and some days they are home, they will be part of a live class that's in-person. So the teacher will have students in front of them and then there'll be a few, you know, the counterparts from the other part of the alphabet on the screen. This is how a lot of the campuses, the college campuses are doing this and, and other districts around the country to accommodate that A/B schedule so that students are having interaction with their peers and also teachers are able to kind of keep, keep the lessons moving, whether your child's here or not on any given day. It's a very new way of delivering content. I mean, all of this is new, right? So this is a very new way for our teaching staff to deliver content. So, you know, it's definitely going to be a work in progress. We know, just like at the beginning of the school year, we're going to be spending time with students around rituals and routines of the, of the classroom as well as rituals and routines of distance learning. So we can't emphasize enough how important it is to find that special spot, that quiet spot in your house for your child with their own little, you know, workstation so that it becomes part of their routine. That they should be, you know, dressed for school and, and ready to learn. So all those little things that make, you know, their world feel like school is very, very important so that they can become part of the classroom and at the same time, trying to limit the amount of screen time for all our children, whether they're in, in this building or they're in your home.
So just three minutes left and we have a couple more questions. What is the percentage of students that chose full-distance learning? Currently, it is 30% at TMS who chose some form of the full-distance learning, whether that's the 60 days, the semester, or the full year. Question is, what will happen if a student changes from in-school to distance learning? Would they join the class that has already been distanced? So if in the middle of the year, a student switches, like let's say it's November and a family comes unsafe and they want to switch, they would most likely already stay in the section they are in. They wouldn't move. They would probably be remoted in to that section. That is our best guess answer to that right now. Students who came from abroad and do not have English as their first language will have some kind of special program?
Yes, absolutely. I, we are, we've expanded the number of teachers who support students who need English language as a support. So we are hoping to have three English-language teachers here and a full-time translator.
So that was the last question in the chat. Thank you, Dr. Jermaine, for following up on that. This has been posted and it has all of our contact information. So if you have questions that come up tonight as you're thinking about this in the future, please just reach out to Dr. Bean and myself.
So thank you, everyone, for coming. We really appreciated your questions ahead of time because that really was what helped us to create the presentation. Everything that we've been doing with the teachers these past two days has been safety, social, emotional work for your children as well as the academic. So each day, those are the three pieces that we're working on with the staff to get prepared for your child. And, and I know you want more information, you want specifics. And believe me, we want to give them to you. So, you know, we're getting there, but like, like we said, every, every day, the information changes for us. And so that, you know, really adds another layer to us. So please know we're working hard on behalf of your children and we can't wait to see them.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Bye, everybody. Bye.